Good afternoon. I am going to call this regular meeting of the Committee of the Whole for Wednesday, October 17th, to order. My name is Andrea Jenkins and I am the Chair of this committee. With me at the dais are Councilmembers Johnson, Goodman, Ellison, Worszami, Councilmember Schrader, and Council President Bender, as well as Councilmembers Fletcher and Kano. Let the record reflect that we do have a quorum, and we have been joined by Councilmembers Pamosano, as well as Councilmember Cunningham. We do have a quorum of this committee, and the only business we have before us today is the receipt of reports from the standing committees on matters to be considered by the full council at our regular council meeting this Friday. And we will begin with the Budget Committee chaired by Councilmember Pamosano.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just wanted to point out that we received and filed departmental budget presentations and had some good conversations over the results metrics for the Health Department, Civil Rights, the City Attorney's Office, and Youth Coordinating Board this time around. That's all I have.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Chair Pamosano? Seeing none, I just want to acknowledge that we have been joined by Councilmember Gordon, and our next committee report is the Economic Development and Regulatory Services Committee chaired by Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. EDRS is bringing forward 18 items for approval on Friday. Item one is a license renewal. Items two, three, four, five, and six are all rental license denials for former Friends Zerbalis properties. Item number seven are the on-sale liquor licenses, and eight are the liquor license approvals; nine are the gambling licenses, and 10 are the gambling license renewals; 11 are the general license approvals, and 12 are the business operating conditions; and 13 is the general license renewals. Item 14 is a license settlement conference. Item 15 is a rental license reinstatement. I'll note that's also a former Friends property. Item 16 is a cost participation agreement with Hennepin County. Item 17 is a loan for Cajun Twist. And item number 18 are the applications for the environmental grant founding for the Brownfields program. I also would like to note, Madam Vice President, that there are two major items on the EDRS agenda next Tuesday. The first item is a public hearing on advance notice of sale, which is about two years coming, and the other item is the conduct on premise changes that have been, that they've been working on for about a year now. So those will both have public hearings. There are very major issues surrounding rental licensing, and so I'd invite anyone who's not on the committee to come, and they'll both be public hearings. I have no idea how many people will be here, but these are major items moving forward in this next cycle. Thank you. I'm happy to stand for questions.
Thank you, Chair Goodman. Are there any questions? Any questions? Thank you for that update. The next committee report is the Election and Rules Committee chaired by Councilmember Ellison.
Thank you, Vice President Jenkins. The Elections and Rules Committee will be bringing forward one item for consideration at this Friday's City Council meeting. It is pertaining to the Ethics and Government Ordinance. We will be, I'll just read it here, "The Passage of Ordinance Amending Title II, Chapter 15 of the Minneapolis Code of Ordinances Relating to Administration, Ethics, and Government, Amending Provisions Related to Conflict of Interest Outside Employment, Statements of Economic Interest, and Definitions." In short, to summarize, we will be conforming to the state's code of ethics, and so I'm happy to stand for any questions.
Thank you, Chair. Ellison, are there any questions? Seeing none, we will next hear from the Enterprise Committee chaired by Councilmember Pamosano.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have for your consideration on Friday four IT contracts and one authorization of a donation, as we've done in the past. The four IT contracts involve inter-jurisdictional understanding with our computer-aided dispatch system, a contract amendment with CSC CyberTech for risk management and claims processing, a contract for upgrading some of our software that we use regularly across the enterprise called Project Docs, and a contract with Clearwater for investments, capital, and debt management services. The authorization of donation is to give some of our older computing equipment to be cleaned, refurbished, and then donated for use in the community. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Chair Pamosano. Are there any questions? Seeing none, we will next hear from the Housing Policy and Development Committee chaired by Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you, Vice President Jenkins. The Housing Policy and Development Committee is bringing forward six items for consideration. The first is a land sale at 3110 Upton Avenue North. The second is acknowledgment of receptivity to a Livable Communities Act funding award, and these are a variety of awards in response to applications for the Metropolitan Council Livability's Community Local Housing Incentive Account Grant Funds. The third item is awarding exclusive development rights to Park Place Apartments at 2806 Park Avenue South. The fourth is authorizing submission of some grant applications for the 2018 Metropolitan Council Livable Communities Demonstration Account, that's LCDA grants. The fifth is directing regulatory services and CPAD staff to develop a scope of services and budget to provide some case management related to the Steve Friends rental dwelling license certifications for the remainder of this year. And the sixth item is a direction to staff to modify our HUD 2015-2019 five-year consolidated plan, we usually call it the consolidated plan, and the associated action plan to give some flexibility regarding our emergency solutions grant funding, to allow funding to be used to support overnight emergency shelter operations. I will stand for questions on any of those items, if anybody has any.
Thank you, Chair Gordon. Are there any questions? Seeing none, we will move to the Public Health, Environment, Civil Rights, and Engagement Committee, and that chair is Councilmember Cunningham.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. The Public Health, Environment, Civil Rights, and Engagement Committee will be bringing forward three items for consideration at Friday's council meeting. The first is the passage of an honorary resolution recognizing October 2018 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Number two is a request for proposals for community solar gardens. I just want to name real quick that we just had a community solar garden open up in Ward Four at the Impact Building on Lyndale that will be going towards low-income folks in the ward, so I'm very grateful to them. Additionally in that, we will be authorizing issuance for the East Side Storage and Maintenance Facility, the police property, and evidence, and the water treatment. Number three is the community solar garden agreements. I just want to share, actually, this is really exciting update, is that we have been creating so much renewable energy that we actually have to increase the amount of allowable annual kilowatts. So that's really exciting that we are above and beyond exceeding our expectations. So we're going to be increasing that to 30 million kilowatts annually, and also authorizing a contract with an operator of the solar gardens. Colleagues, I just want to let you know that we also had three presentations. One was the Public Health Advisory Committee with their report. We had an update on the staple food ordinance. We had updates on that presented with research from the University of Minnesota, so if folks are interested in the updates, please check that out. And then also, we had a very informative presentation from the Youth Coordinating Board. So before we make decisions about budgets, I just want to make sure that folks have access to that information. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Chair Cunningham. Are there any questions? Seeing none, we will next hear from the Transportation and Public Works Committee, and that report will be given by Councilmember Fletcher.
Thank you, Vice President Jenkins. The Transportation and Public Works Committee will be bringing forward 10 items for the council's consideration. The first is passage of a resolution approving special service districts for 2019. The second is passage of a resolution ordering work to proceed on the Fourth Street lighting district. The third is consolidating sanitary sewer requirements ordinance. The fourth is a new ordinance regulating the disposal of fats, oil, and grease. The fifth is temporary easement agreements for Cedar Avenue South for a reconstruction project. The sixth item is a contract amendment with global specialty contractors for the Northtown Bridge interpretive site project. The seventh is a contract amendment with Hennepin County for road maintenance. The eighth is the Eighth Street South Street Reconstruction Project, setting a public hearing. The ninth is the North Loop Paving Street Reconstruction Project, designation, cost estimate, and setting a public hearing. And the tenth item is the Highway Turnback deed from the state of Minnesota for land adjacent to Trunk Highway 55. I'm happy to stand for questions.
Thank you, Councilmember Fletcher. Are there any questions? No questions. Our next committee report is the Ways and Means Committee, and its chair is Councilmember Worszami.
Thank you, Madam. Thank you, Madam President. The Ways and Means Committee has eight items to bring forth to your attention. Item number one is a grant from the Minnesota Department of Human Services. Item number two is a 2018 property tax special assessment of delinquent utility charges. Item number three is a contract amendment with Innup Brook Systems, Inc. for upgrades to the Minneapolis Convention Center's online ordering portal. Item number four is a bid for the Minneapolis Convention Center Tarazo Update War. Item number five is a contract amendment with Lifetech Services for emergency medical services at the Minneapolis Convention Center. Item number six is a request for proposal to establish the city's legal services panel. Item number seven is an agreement with the Minneapolis Local Organizing Committee for the 2019 Men's Basketball Final Four. Item number eight is a navigation center development at 2105, 2109, 2113 Cedar Avenue, and this has four different items, which is, one is a passage of resolution approving various appropriation, not to exceed $1,500,000 for the development of the navigation center at 2109 Cedar Avenue South. Two is authorizing other actions necessary to advance the navigation center to be located at 2109 Cedar Avenue South. Three is a passage of resolution declaring that the navigation center project is a neighborhood revitalization, purpose for which consolidated redevelopment TIF district funds may be expanded. And number four is a passage of resolution declaring the official intent of the city of Minneapolis to reimburse certain expenditure from the proceeds of tax-exempt bonds to be issued by the city. And I'm happy to stand for any questions.
I see we have a question or comment from Councilmember Gordon.
Yeah, this is a comment, or maybe some thoughts around item eight, which has to do with the funding of the navigation center. I have some concerns about using the consolidated TIF district funding for this, and I think during some of the budget discussions, we talked a little bit about how the mayor has proposed to use this budget and some revenue in it for affordable housing in next year's budget, and I was trying to flag that then, as this is an important policy discussion that we'll want to talk about. This is going to look to neighborhood organizations, and maybe to our own neighborhood community relations department, like something's at risk for them. I definitely want to be able to move forward with the navigation center. If you look carefully at the Resolution 8.1, it does identify two funding sources. It talks about extra funding that we have in our pension fund, and it talks about using $1 million of that, and then it also talks about money from this tax increment financing district. I'd feel much more comfortable if we funded the navigation center just from the pension side of that. I will work with the finance director to see if we think there is the 1.5 available to get there, and I may come forward Friday with an amendment. Essentially, what this would do would mean then we'd have to change that Resolution 8.1 that talks about the two funding sources, to put it all on the pension fund, and then we would remove that resolution that I think is going to get people to really notice what's going on, where we declare the navigation center's neighborhood revitalization uses. I don't think that resolution then would be necessary. So I've barely talked with at least one of my colleagues about this, I guess, because Councilmember Johnson talked to me, so I wanted to make sure everybody had a heads-up right now that it's at least something I'm working on, and I think there might be a pathway forward so that we can kind of put off figuring out what we declare neighborhood revitalization or not for further, deeper discussions as we move forward.
The Chair will recognize Councilmember Kano.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm just curious, from the author of the resolution, or others who were involved in this, what other sources of funding were considered or available before the decision to use this source of funding was made? Point of information.
Thank you, Councilmember Kano, and I think Mark Ruff is here to give us an extra background on this, but there were a number of, there was the pension fund, and there was also the money that we captured from the railcar, TIF money from that. So there was two options, and we thought that the TIF money would be a cleaner option. And considering that the TIF money came, or consolidated TIF money came from, you know, the fact that we have so many properties that were developed around downtown, and a lot of taxes that were paid in that has been captured, I think it does send a message from the city that we do take homelessness seriously, and that this is one way of alleviating this crisis that we have right now. But I'll give it to Mark to give us a background.
Council Vice President Jenkins, Councilmember Gordon, and Councilmember Worszami. Councilmember Kano, I think you asked specifically the question, what other sources were contemplated? All of these sources are within the mayor's recommended budget for the increase in affordable housing on a one-time basis for 2019. So why did we choose these particular sources? Number one, is there, these particular sources are available in 2018? All right, so either cash, or, in the case of the consolidated TIF, just to emphasize, we are not reducing fundings to the neighborhood, funding amounts to the neighborhood. This is a larger amount of tax increment that's being received than had been anticipated even a few years ago because of the value increases, and because, if you look in some of the documents, there was some question as to there was a cap on that district or not in dollar amount, and that question has been essentially erased through some discussions with the county. So not knowing that we would trip as staff into a very large issue about neighborhood funding, we thought that the consolidated TIF was the most flexible dollars that would enable us to move forward as quickly as possible. Certainly, Councilmember Gordon's suggestion on using other cash is just as viable. In the end of the day, even aside from that, the council, we have a public hearing in front of committee for tax increment in November, where this issue of neighborhood revitalization purposes is being considered there. Again, it's limited to affordable housing, but that's over $10 million of consolidated TIF that is designated towards the mayor's 2019 one-time funding for affordable housing. So this is, you know, this discussion is a preview of a larger discussion of affordable housing from that source, and so, just the context, but very basically, it's all of the money that was considered for the mayor's 2019 affordable housing funding, Councilmember Kano. If that helps, or if that confused the issue more, please let me know.
Thank you, Mr. Ruff. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Goodman.
Well, I'm glad Mr. Ruff brought up the process we're in underway right now for the 45-day review with regard to the larger changes where someone's asking to make with regard to the consolidated TIF district, because 1.5 looks like nothing to neighborhoods compared to the 20 million that we're suggesting we're taking from them to put into affordable housing. And I have heard from plenty of them, and rightfully so, that the, they don't want to be pitted against affordable housing, they don't appreciate being pitted against affordable housing, and they're wondering why we're paying the county back anything. And so there are a lot, we're out on a 45-day review on this larger TIF issue, so the public is aware. People who work with and around neighborhood associations are aware what's going on, and so 1.5 looks like nothing compared to the larger amount. I don't remember having a conversation, I suppose we're in the 45-day review, and then we'll have the conversation about whether or not that's where the affordable housing money is coming from, but unless someone can explain that to neighborhood associations, how their feeling is their funding ends next year. And the 2020 process has not set out how neighborhoods are going to be funded, and they see the common project TIF district as, I mean, only Councilmember Gordon was here at that time, and Andrea was around. I mean, this was the old NRP money that came from the consolidated TIF districts, and when NRP ended and the new version came forward, we went to the state and we asked them to be able to use that money for economic development purposes broadly defined. So you would think you almost wouldn't need a change to spend this money on the encampment because this would be economic development purposes broadly defined. So, I mean, this is nothing compared to how upset people are going to be if they perceive us as spending money on anything other than neighborhood-related services, and since that hasn't been worked out, there is, you know, kind of a level of concern. I don't want to call it paranoia, but I'm, other people are shaking their head, so they've heard it too, so I'm not the only one. So we haven't done a very good job, I will speak for myself, in explaining to neighborhoods what this is, but the budget process, nothing against the budget chair, the mayor's budget, did not explain to people that this big infusion of affordable housing money actually could be perceived as coming out of neighborhood money. And we all sat here thinking, oh, great, he's going to put all this money into affordable housing, and now we're finding out where it's coming from and what the other choices are, and we're going to be hearing from people in the public that, why we're not paying attention to neighborhood funding too. So I don't necessarily object at all to the current motion on the table because I actually think the consolidated TIF district allows us to use money for economic development and solving this interim homeless encampment issue, probably qualifies, clarifying it through some sort of motion makes sense, but, I mean, this is nothing compared to the 20 million we're suggesting to go to housing, the 17 million we're suggesting giving back to the county, the multimillion dollars we're talking about paying off debt early on the Target Center, which actually I'd support because less debt service means more money going into programs. This is going to be a bigger issue down the road, so I'm glad it was discussed yesterday in Ways and Means. I didn't hear a lot about it, but it is a foreshadowing of a larger conversation that some people will be happy to have, and others may be less so.
Councilmember Schrader.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to echo the comments of Councilmember Gordon and Councilmember Goodman. My concern is that we have decided what we want to do, that we want to do something with the encampment, completely agree with that, and, but we haven't decided of how we're going to do that. And my concern that, I just echo the concerns of other council members, that where this money comes from is a statement of our values, and that that is a critical part of how we answer this.
Council President Bender.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I need to go back and watch the committee meeting I wasn't available to attend, so I am speaking without having that context, but I think I want to offer a little different perspective, which is, you know, we have a pretty set number of available sources of funding to make major investments, you know, over $1 million or more, and, you know, any council member, I think, should sit down with Finance, if you haven't yet, and get the list of those things. We have some cash reserves, we have some specific land sales, we have a pretty large amount of money in our development account, which has been kind of imagined to go mostly for Upper Harbor Terminal redevelopment. We have these funding sources that the mayor has proposed to use one-time dollars for affordable housing, but beyond that, we've really tightened up our assumptions about revenue sources. We've spent a lot of the money that was available as cash or other readily available sources on the early years of our Parks and Streets commitment, and we did that in order to not have a giant levy increase in any one year, as we made an $800 million commitment to our Parks and Streets. So I think my perspective is, if we're going to commit to spending $1.5 million on the encampment, which I think the majority of the council agrees with, you know, the place that we take the money from in the short term, being the next few weeks or months, probably isn't as important as the bigger picture of how we're planning for some of these other major expenditures, knowing, again, that we have like a limited number of dollars available unless we significantly increase property taxes in the future, which we already, I mean, the levy is a ready plan to go up more than it has in recent years, in the coming years. So we just, these are just the choices that we make. When we decide to spend $1.5 million on something, it has to come from one of these sort of small number of readily available funds, and I think going forward, we can always make whole anything else that we think we want to commit to as a group of policymakers. So the idea of pitting one thing against the other is, in some way, I think, how we talk about it and how we explain it to our constituents, and part of our job is to make sure people understand that going forward, I mean, we do have to solve for neighborhood organization funding. That has not been resolved for the year, you know, in the time, we've all known that was coming, and we've sort of been pushing it off as the years go by. It's something we have to deal with, but I don't think we necessarily need to complete the two as we look to find the money to spend on this.
Councilmember Gordon.
Appreciate the conversation. I think if it's clear that we have the 1.5 available in the pension fund, I think that's a cash reserve there, I think that's a better place to go for now so we can keep having this deeper discussion. I may ultimately think it's all right using the tax increment financing district money for affordable housing for a one-time expense, but I would expect to get some assurances for myself and for others about how we're going to also meet some of those other needs, and we want to look at it carefully, make sure our obligation to the Target Center is taken care of, and make sure that we have some stability in terms of funding our department that's now being funded out of that, and also giving support appropriately to neighborhood organizations, so. And my understanding is that there is enough in the pension fund so that we could cover the 1.5 million for the navigation center.
Councilmember Fletcher, and then Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Vice President Jenkins. So just to expand a little bit on the sort of funding sources question of, you know, what were we choosing between? I do think that being too aggressive about taking cash out of the pension fund is also a policy discussion that would be a big policy discussion that we should have, and so I'm not convinced that we should focus all of it on the pension fund. And then the other thing that was sort of put on the table when we were meeting with Finance was the Streetcar Value Capture Fund, which I also think would be a big policy discussion for us to start spending that down in different ways, and that was something that we didn't want to open up going into this conversation. And so I'm very supportive of using the consolidated TIF money, and I just want to articulate that, you know, the reason that we have extra money is that there has been a surplus, that that TIF district has overperformed, and we are fully paying neighborhoods what they were promised for the time period that it was intended for. And so this is, you know, I think we can have a debate about whether that should properly be considered neighborhood's money, that money that goes to the surplus, but I'm not inclined to necessarily think of it that way. I think that it makes sense to use it for this purpose, and I'm supportive of doing that. So just wanted to add that perspective, that I think we are making neighborhoods whole. We do have the challenge of figuring out neighborhood funding moving forward, but I think for now, the proposal as written makes a lot of sense.
Councilmember Johnson, and then Councilmember Kano.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate Councilmember Gordon raising the points on this, and I had a lot of questions and concerns yesterday in committee as well about this, and that's why I abstained from voting on this, so I could dig in further. I think that being one of seven council members coming in in 2013, and then five new council members this last cycle, I think that might be one of the downsides of having a lot of new folks around and young folks around, is that we don't necessarily have that longer-term history around NRP, and weren't there for the conversations when they happened decades ago. And I know that our neighborhood associations are very sensitive about this, and so I think even the manner in which it happened, that it wasn't posted online before the meeting, that this was an item waiting for us on the dais, it's understandable why folks could feel blindsided, and especially when this truly is a significant policy decision. We are making a significant policy decision to expand the uses of this consolidated TIF district beyond their traditional destinations. And it was so significant that years ago, several years ago, Councilmember Gordon and I authored a budget amendment to avoid the question, actually, because of the mayor's proposed budget that suggested a different use, and that passed through the council. And so I think part of the concern here is that this would come up so suddenly, without notice, and it really is a major policy decision, and something that we should have a thorough discussion on. So I think, you know, there are other sources out there. I mean, yesterday in the committee as well, it's worth noting for folks that it's worth noting for folks that we tapped into the Downtown Assets Fund to fund a public subsidy for the NCAA of $800,000 to reimburse expenses.
What?
No, it was $800,000 from Downtown Asset Fund. It was $100,000 from the budget that was passed last year. And so I vote against that, but the committee passed that. So we've clearly got enough money in the Downtown Asset Fund to support subsidies for a large event. Why can't we look to that fund, for instance, for covering on a short-term basis, funding this encampment issue? You know, there's other sources, I'm sure. And I am happy to work with Councilmember Gordon and my colleagues. I'm finding a source that we can agree with, and I agree with Councilmember Goodman, on we need to have a thorough discussion on this and give people advance notice, and engage the community before making such a big policy decision on this. Because from our neighborhood standpoint, you know, they're collectively, it's about $5 million a year right now that they're getting. They used to have 20 million. And so there's been about a 75% reduction over time. And from my conversations, again, I wasn't there because I am so young and fairly new to this, but from my understanding of the conversations, when the consolidated TIF district was created, the expectation was that the excess funding, if there was some, would eventually go to the neighborhood associations. So, you know, there, it's understandable why there would be concern over this. And that's why I think we need to do our best to fully engage our neighborhood associations on this, and why we need to be transparent about it. And taking this emergency situation with the encampment and using this moment as an opportunity to make such a consequential policy decision just doesn't seem right to me. So I hope we can figure out a different source that'll work better and be more agreeable for colleagues, and then we can have that transparent discussion and proper engagement on this question. Thank you.
Councilmember Canna.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I was able to have a meeting with NCR earlier this week. They were doing, I think, their regular briefings with council members about the work that's been going into the future planning for neighborhood associations in terms of how is the city leading a process to, I guess, clarify how some of the neighborhood organization work has been happening, and to try to level the playing field so that more neighborhood associations are operating at the same level, so that some neighborhoods are not able to rely on less capacity than others when addressing issues that impact them, whether it's development, or whether it's more affordable housing, or whether it's healthy, you know, healthy, sustainable living. And so it was, it was really good to get a sense of how all of the, you know, program-level work is, is unfolding, and the touchpoints the council will have with that discussion. And, and it was, you know, we did discuss how NCR as a division or a department does not have ongoing funding for its operations. All of the cultural staff that work there, all of the administrative support, and our director, David Rubador, and his team, they, they don't have a long-term funding source that can sustain the department for years to come. And so we're in the process of discussing some of those things. I personally would appreciate having a conversation about the funding questions that relate to that, so that we're not, so that the people that are made aware of certain pools of money before the rest of us don't, like, get the chance to kind of go after that money, just because they knew about it before everybody else did. And, and so it's kind of, you know, it's kind of interesting how this work plays out sometimes, because obviously the Ways and Means Committee will kind of get a first stab at that conversation, or maybe already has. We could, at the, at the Peace Committee, you know, if Councilmember Cunningham is the chair, could consider it, we, we could have a heartier conversation around what, what is that, that source of funding that has now been projected to be more than what we expected, and therefore there's resources to be shared and spread, and sort of what is, what are the conversations around that, and what, what is the process to make decisions when there is excess funds available? Because it's, I feel like, you know, we're kind of trying to have a conversation at Level 5, when folks are still, you know, being made aware of Level 1, 2, 3, and 4. And so, so I'm a little uncomfortable with, with some of the, the decisions around this, this 1.5 coming from this source, because we haven't had that broader conversation about what is the process for the future of NCR, and getting their funding secured, and what is the process for the future of the neighborhood organizations. And, and I believe that that work is going to get better. You know, I understand that there's concerns that some of the funding the city has spent on neighborhood associations hasn't yielded a lot of hard results. I'm not one of the folks that feels that way. I, I can see how the money has been really well-spent in low-income neighborhoods like Phillips and Corcoran, where there has been extensive work done on proactive community development projects and affordable housing projects. So I'm interested in seeing if there is a way that we can get to, like, a healthier yes on Friday. I'm not quite sure what that process would be, and who the leader of that conversation might be. Maybe Councilmember Gordon has some ideas already, and he's proposed some. But I, but the other question I want to put on the table is, how much money is the county putting in? Are they, are they matching our 1.5 million? Maybe they should be putting in half of the 1.5 million. I, I'm just curious about, you know, like, if, if we anticipate the entire project to cost $5 million, I'm just making that up, then I hope that half of that is going to come from the county, and, and I hope that the city is then just planning to be half of that, that partnership. So I'm just curious if anybody knows here on the dais, if the county is either in, interested in putting money in with us, you know, if, if they're taking up resolutions, also directing their staff to come up with a million dollars, or maybe, you know, again, I, I don't, I don't quite get, I don't know what the final price tag is going to be for this project. And I would really want us to use this opportunity to ensure that the county is also putting dollars on the table. So whether it's asking them to approve a resolution this week, or next week, or holding ours up until theirs is ready, we can certainly take, take votes on this in the, in the next week or two. And I'm also, you know, flexible. If, if folks feel like the county is moving in the right direction, and we don't have to sort of hold up our process, and, and they're stepping up in, in other ways, I would be happy to hear that information and to support moving forward with something on Friday. So just curious if anybody has any information about what resources the county is matching or putting forward on this front.
I might be able to speak to that, but Councilmember Cunningham is in queue.
If you want to answer that, this time.
So I had a meeting with County Chair Jan Callison earlier today. And she indicated that at a previous, I believe, our last adjourned council meeting, there was a recommendation that there be a committee or a work group established between the city and the county. And she indicated that the person who made that recommendation, no one has reached out to the county to, to begin that process. And so she indicated a willingness to participate, but that, that there hasn't been any communication since that last meeting.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I know the mayor's office has met frequently with Chair Callison. We did send a letter and some communication to her office after the council meeting. Of course, we, this is just a fact, and I don't mean it to editorialize, that, that, you know, the resolution was brought very last minute with very little time for council members, as well as that, the amendment to add this new working group. So of course, the chair found out about that in the press, which I would understand why that would be frustrating for any elected official. So we did reach out. We're waiting to hear back from the county about participation in the work group. I also did just send, I sent an email to the whole council with that update last week, as well as with a thanks to the four council members who've agreed to serve on the working group. I did just send another email reminder today. I don't think that work group has met yet. And I think even just starting with the council members would be an important step, just because so many of these critical decisions are being made as we speak and in the very near future. So it may take some time to get the folks established from the county. We do also have a standing partnership with the county called Heading Home Hennepin. Chair Callison is the chair of that group, and Mayor Frye, myself, and Councilmember Schrader serve on that committee. I know the next meeting is coming up next week, and maybe even later this week. And I expect the full time period of that meeting to be spent addressing the city and county's collaboration on this. But the answer to the question is that the county has not committed any particular amount of funding. I know that they have indicated that they could provide operational resources using existing funding that they have. I don't know of any plan to put an agenda item on any of their board meetings. I've been in frequent contact with my commissioner as well. I'm sure many of us have been in touch with the county commissioners. But I believe, you know, part of the issues that the majority of the communication has been coming from the mayor's office, to our external partners, and the governor's office, and in the county commission. And so I think, again, this working group was intended to help try to keep the council more abreast of those conversations. And hopefully, I mean, council members should be in my, in the room, in my opinion, given the fact that we are approving these funds. For many weeks, a number of us have been saying that we would feel more comfortable with this if the county had, had given a more specific and public commitment. So as far as I know now, that there is a, a private donor who has stepped up to, to donate funds for operations. So again, the county, while they have been in these bi-weekly meetings with our staff, as far as I know, hasn't made any public and specific commitment to this specific purpose.
Councilmember Cunningham, are you ready?
I am ready now. I just want to make sure that that line of conversation was completed. I'll be quick. I just wanted to first say that we have Neighborhoods 2020, which is a large work group of folks. So we, I think that there could be better communication with that body, and then for us to be able to get information out. I'm just concerned about, again, the, the pitting of neighborhoods versus other, other needs. Councilmember Goodman, if I remember, if I remember hearing you correctly, you were here around when those conversations happened, and economic development is what was accepted as, as an overview. So I, I feel like, from the city's perspective, if we have a profit, an unexpected amount of revenue in that, it is not inherently tied then to neighborhood associations, but to economic development. So this would fall within that. And so if we have additional revenue, I just want to say that here is an opportunity, a pressing urgent issue, for us to be able to invest in our values around this. And, but I, I say that also with a very hearty expectation that the county steps up as well. So I want to make sure that we are not absorbing all of it. At the same time, I, I think that this is a, a good starting place for us to have this conversation. And I do not, here, there is actually no impact to neighborhood associations underneath the current, what we are discussing. So yes, there's a larger policy conversation, but I just wanted to, to go back to that point.
Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. That is completely true. No one loses by spending $1.5 million of the money from the Common Project TIF district on the encampment. I think the reason it's become a concern is because of the larger notice that's out now with regard to changes in the consolidated TIF districts to take 20 million, you know, 18 times the size, and put that towards affordable housing. And the neighborhood folks that I have talked to feel put off that they're being, they are going to have to fight it out, which I don't think they will, but this is how they feel, against affordable housing. And they want both of those things to happen, and they feel it's unfair to have one pressing need pitted against another pressing need. And then I guess I'll just roll back to, the mayor's budget put a bunch of money into affordable housing without identifying in advance that a major change would be needed with regard to the Common Project TIF districts in order to achieve that goal. We're finding out about that now because of the public notice that's gone out. And then you compile it with this change that needs to be made with regard to the encampment. All of these things are kind of happening at once. So I would, I personally, although I'm not thrilled about using this source, it is way better than using, in my opinion, pension, excess pension reserves, which I don't like the idea of using reserves for something as important as our employees' pensions and funding our employees' pensions. We don't know what the result of the legislative session, the elections is going to bring. We don't know how it will pan out as it pertains to LGA. I have been here when Democrats have been in charge. I've been here when Republicans have been in charge. I've been here when we've had a lot of money, and unfortunately, I've been here when we've had none. And I would urge us to not go back to the 25 years ago, when I first came onto the council, when the city was carrying 17% debt service payments. Because when you have that kind of money going into paying off debt, that is money that's not going into doing the business of the city. And there's a lot of comments being thrown around by, use TIF for this, use TIF for that. Well, that's also debt, you guys. And so I'm willing to use some, but I don't want to put ourselves back in the position of feeling like we're using a credit card to fund the city's operations. And so I don't, I hope everyone doesn't spend a lot of time rambling to look for another source to solve this problem for Friday. But keep in mind that what's coming in front of us is a $20 million ask against the neighborhood's tiny ask, but it won't affect them next year. We have a year to figure out where this neighborhood money is coming from and what the level would be. And I'm not usually, in my real life, I'm not the oldest. I'm usually about the youngest, but here I seem to be the oldest. And so I love Councilmember, genuinely love Councilmember Johnson's comment about how I remember when. Neighborhoods, what we want to do is fund neighborhood organizations, their structure, their staffing, and ensure that there is some money for partnerships and collaboration to work on programs. But that is not going to be in the $20 million range. The NRP program that churned out $20 million a year, those days are long gone. Neighborhoods are not making decisions about massive public expenditures. I mean, if we did that, you'd have, well, without question, you'd have like a bike lane that started in Councilmember Bender's ward and stop in mine. So, just using a fun example. So we don't want that.
I'm willing to start there.
Yeah, well, yeah, that could be too. So, I mean, we just don't want that. I mean, we can't, we can no longer take a giant chunk of money and say to the neighborhoods, you know, spend it on whenever you want. But we have to have funding for neighborhood organizations, and money to enhance collaboration and coordination between neighborhood organizations to solve city goals. That's going to be a much more difficult decision, but it's not going to be 20 million for affordable housing versus 20 million for neighborhoods. It's going to be whatever we all determine will be the right amount for affordable housing at this time, compared to something in the $5 million range per year for neighborhoods. So I just wanted to kind of straighten that out.
The chair wants to recognize Councilmember Worsami, but I will say, having, since I have been acknowledged as being around for a long time, that, that NRP funding was initially restricted to 50% of those funds being used for maintaining housing and affordable housing. And so to, and it was not. And so to, to really, to, to use these funds for a temporary affordable housing project, or however we want to frame that, is not incompatible with the intent of, of neighborhood funds. Councilmember Worsami.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And, you know, I really appreciate the healthy discussion and, and the input from my colleagues. We know, and I think Council President Bender had mentioned a couple of times, that these, this Navigation Center decision-making has been going on rapidly, you know? Things are coming on every day. It's not like, to answer, I don't want to answer some of the comments from my colleagues, but it's not like, you know, we found magic money sources somewhere and hidden from everybody else, and we want to take a stab at it. You know, what we were doing, as I believe on the, in the Ways and Means Committee, was addressing this urgent, emergency, public health issue, where three people have already died, and trying to come out with a solution. And when we had the different, when I, when I had the discussion with the staff, and we had these different options, I didn't think the pension money was a viable money to tap into or just get out. Because I, we understand the, the rules, the regulations, the, the atmosphere that we find ourselves with pensions, you know? It's very difficult. It's a very difficult situation right now. And to just tap into that and say, "Oh, we're going to use that source and not use the TIF money," you know, it made no sense to me personally. And I think that's why I supported the resolution and came to support it. Now, with regards to the discussion that we're going to have in November, up to November 3rd in a public hearing, this is not about that. And this is not about the mayor's budget. This is about the encampment in Ward 6 that we've all decided that we're going to do something about. And I believe that this source of money makes sense. And my initial thinking was not to pit neighborhoods or take something from neighborhoods. And we have a discussion with Neighborhoods 2020, you know, with David Rubidore and the rest every day, you know? I have discussions all the time. I have actually a neighborhood in my ward, Cedar Riverside, that doesn't have a functioning neighborhood organization, and we're trying to fix something. So this was not about that. This was about us addressing the Navigation Center before winter comes. And I think we found a source that makes sense to most people. And I appreciate my colleagues on the committee, some of their discussion and input. However, this is not about that discussion that we should have and we will continue to have, and we will have a public hearing on November 3rd. And we'd love to have your support on the resolution and just moving this Navigation Center forward. And I do believe, and I think the council leadership, and we have both council president and vice president here on this committee, we need to have that discussion going forward. What's kind of, if these type of emergencies emerge, what should we learn from it from this year? And we should not have this repetitive pressure that we put on our staff. But I think moving forward, you know, this makes sense to me and we shouldn't be too orthodoxy with regards to the consolidated TIF money and with regards to neighborhood funding. We should be creative, but we need to address this emergency. And I think Councilmember Palmisano mentioned to me earlier today in a side discussion that we, the city of Minneapolis, have an opportunity to demonstrate that we can do better with addressing this type of homeless crisis than other cities have done. And we can actually be a model, regardless of how confusing our process has been and how difficult it's been, that we could actually be a model for other cities to follow. Because homelessness is a factor and is going to increase as inequality increases in our society. Thank you.
Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you. And I don't know that we have to belabor the history too much, but that what got approved in the past is still what we're supposed to be following. And this, so I just wanted to highlight for folks that the tax increment finance district is pretty massive. I think there's over 4,000 parcels in it. And when we actually had the debate and we agreed that we would decertify half of it, what we were debating was property tax relief versus, and we came up with two things we were willing to set that money aside for besides that property tax relief and into the general fund, and that was target centered, well, maybe there were three, target centered debt relief, neighborhood revitalization purposes, and the administrative costs of such a massive district. So that's more than, what I'm worried about is the deal we made with ourselves and the people of Minneapolis, not that the neighborhood organizations haven't got whole and fulfilled on the commitments we made for them, which we have. And I think it's a worthwhile discussion and I think there are ways that we can get to the bigger picture about what we're supposed to do next year and address affordable housing. I'm also hearing that there's not uniformity about the idea of relying solely on the pensions. I do hope that maybe we can have some discussions before Friday. Maybe there's a way to rely less on that taxing district. It's unfortunate we have to pass a resolution actually declaring the Navigation Center neighborhood revitalization purposes without having a hearing and without doing all that. So I, hopefully, Councilmember Orsami will give me the opportunity to meet. Councilmember Fletcher will also accept more information about how large the reserves are in the pension fund. I certainly don't want to put our pensions at risk, wouldn't even propose it if I thought we were in any way not going to be able to fulfill those obligations. So we'll look into that in a couple of days and maybe there's some kind of compromise that we can come up with before then.
Seeing no further discussion, we will now move to the Zoning and Planning Committee report. Chair, by Councilmember Schrader.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Zoning and Planning Committee will be bringing forward four items on Friday. The first is granting of appeal by Paul Zubner for 424 Washington Avenue North. The second is the passing of an ordinance on split zoning. The third is the passing of an ordinance on limited entertainment. And the fourth is the passing of an ordinance regarding regulation of rooftop mechanical equipment. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions?
Seeing none, we will hear from the Audit Committee's Chair, Councilmember Palmisano.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We did have an Audit Committee meeting this week on Monday, and we did receive and file and order publish the payroll audit, which has been a long time in coming. So there's no action needed on Friday by council with that Audit Committee as an independent committee of council. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Palmisano. Are there any questions? Seeing none, that completes our business for this afternoon. With no further business to come before us, this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.